Now you caught up and spoke on this.
Say that if you are going to speak, if you would, please fill out a citizen participation form. You will have three minutes to address the mayor and the council. I'll ask that decorum is followed and that you address the mayor and the council. At this time, the mayor will call to order the regular city council meeting for 6:00 PM Tuesday, November the 4th of 2025. City Council chambers, 201 East Nash Street, Terrell, Texas. I have here on the dais with us District Two Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro tem. Absent today but excused is District Three Mayroni Velazquez. But with us this evening is District Four Stephanie Holmes Thomas. And District Five, our mayor pro tem, Phil Robinson. At this time, I would ask that Jordan Woodruff, come forward, please. He's the minister of Rockwell and Bryn Church of Christ. He will lead us in our invocation. If you would, please remain standing for our pledges and we'll go forward.
All right, let's pray. Almighty Father in heaven, we come before you humbled. We recognize that you are the supreme sovereign Lord of our lives. You're the creator of the universe. You are the reason why we draw breath every day. I pray that we recognize that you are the author and perfecter of our faith. Whatever place that each of us here finds ourselves tonight, whether we are at peace, whether we have stress and anxiety, whether we have anger or hesitation, I pray that we take a moment now to cast all those negative emotions to you because we know you care. I ask for peace for this council tonight, for all its citizens of this good city, for the leaders here that are, have heavy burdens that they bear. I pray for peace and unity for the decisions that will be made at the end of the day, for the bills, the legislations, the proposals that will be discussed and weighed in the balance. I ask for your wisdom to be on our lips. And I pray for your spirit to guide our hearing ears and that we listen with a holy intent. Father, I pray for unity, for all of us, unity first and foremost in faith, knowing that this life is not our home. This world is not where we are meant to live permanently, but we are all traveling through as sojourners. And we know that there is a better, more perfect place awaiting us if we are faithfully obedient. Lord, I pray for protection over our families. I pray that we are the husbands and fathers, the wives and mothers that you have called us to be and that we build this city first, starting in our homes and our families and that we unite together here tonight, recognizing that we are all going through things and we are all striving toward the same goals and we just might have different ideas of how to get there. And I pray for love to direct all of our decisions and our steps. And I pray for patience. I pray for peace. And I pray that your will be done in our lives and in this town. And we ask all these things according to your will and in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Jordan, if you would, please.
Jordan, on behalf of the mayor and the council of the city of Terrell, we want to thank you for all you do with our faith-based community. We can't do it without you. So I'd like to give you one of our challenge coins. It's one about leading the way in the city of Terrell, obviously with your church congregation and then building your legacy here. We've been here since 1873 and I think your church has got a celebration coming up soon. So we look forward to celebrating with you as that day comes forward. So thank you very much.
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. My pleasure.
Okay. Next on the agenda is mayor and council community recognition and events. Council, I want to take a moment and thank our first responders, our firefighters, our emergency crews that answer 911 calls. Had a individual special group that came to emergency at my home and I just want to, the council to know how efficient, professional they were in dealing with the emergency. And man, we've got a good group and we're very thankful. And I know they do this throughout the city with everyone, but a special thanks from the mayor and to the council. We're going to have some recognitions later on, but does anybody have any thing they would like to say?
Mayor, we went to the Texas Municipal League last week. It's my second annual meeting. My first meeting, I was like, oh, this is wonderful. My second meeting was like, we elected these people. Let me just say that for those of you that are not in the know, the total bills introduced by our Texas legislature was 9,014. Total bills that were passed were 1,231. City-related bills were over 2,000. City-related bills that were passed were 262. Of those 262 bills, we came on the short end of the stick, we being the cities of Texas. So I continue to learn that when laws are passed by the state legislature, those laws, when the governor signs them into the law, the cities are then required to write ordinances to support those laws. Then we have to file those laws, those ordinances with the state of Texas and if we don't, we are penalized. And so we, 23% of the bills this session were anti-city. Omira Mata and I read seven inches of summaries of those resolutions. I missed all the ones that had to do with land use. Senate Bill 840 or 804, when it comes into fruition, is going to make everyone angry. However, we're going to have to write an ordinance about that one also. What is interesting to note is I came away with the fact that our city, along with every other city in Texas, we can say, we talk about the legislature. We talk, we talk, we talk, and we keep electing the same people. And we went from 11% of legislation against cities to 23. Every year, our state legislature exists with this one comment. I wish I was making this up. They look at themselves as anti-government and they look at cities as government. I'm not sure where the disconnect is. And because of that, I continue hearing, well, Donna Renee, that's just the way it is. Well, now I'm at the no. That's not the way it should be. And I came away with two phrases, two things out of four days of listening. Community engagement and legislation advocacy. Councilman Robinson and Councilwoman Holmes, they have heart. They, we're talking streets and drainage. Well, right now, I'm like, I'm doing an end around with the legislation. And we need some legislative advocacy groups. It's a thought in my head. I will come back with that later. But just understand that as representatives, elected officials, we run this city based on what the state says we can do. And we are not allowed to respond. Somehow, the First Amendment, we hold these truths to be self-evident, be in a republic. Somehow that has gone out the window in a state that has more guns than the world. And we need to stop as citizens and become more involved. So mayor, I'm going to cause some trouble.
All right.
I would just like to say.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on. I always start with this when we have this type of response from our community members. Get involved. The next thing I say is stay involved. I say that every time when I see this many people in the room. And people do get involved, but sometimes they don't stay involved. I'm here because I took a choice to stay involved. And with that being said, I just encourage you guys. We need involvement and engagement all the time. It makes us feel good. It makes it feel like what we're doing is important. We can listen to our community members and hear your concerns. Okay? So I piggyback off of what she said and I thank her for attending all those sessions. I attended a few others, but, and I appreciate the city staff taking such good care of us while we were there. They had everything. We didn't have to register a check-in. You had all of that for us. We were able to go through different sessions. So that does not go unnoticed and we appreciate your hard work, Mark, all the way down to all you ladies that made everything possible. Next thing, let's paint the city of Terrell red. Terrell Tigers are district champions. As of Friday, we won it outright. No co-champions here. And I want you guys to continue to encourage our young men and our children, the band and everybody as they represent us as a city. I'm super excited about what Coach Sedbury and his staff has done, getting those children motivated and keeping them out of trouble. So I'm very, very encouraged by that. And you guys continue to help us congratulate them as they move through to their final senior game on Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro tem?
So I just wanted to say thank you to all who came out to my town hall last night. You know, this message of getting involved and staying involved, I think it really is key. Those who took the time to come out and hear about what's going in our community, especially with regard to this current development situation. I think they came with more information about sort of, you know, what it specifically entails. And I think when you get more information and you're armed with more info, it's easier to make kind of a more informed opinion about it and kind of understand all the ins and outs of it, you know, things like, you know, TERZs and everything else. Thank you for taking the time to come out and take part in that. That was really big for our community, I think. But one of the things we did do at TML is we, one of the sessions we went to was about learning to communicate better with our community. And I sometimes worry when we have a big showing like this, when part of our, part of the way the law makes us interact with the public is you come up and you tell us your concerns and we're not allowed to respond back to you. We listen, we hear your concerns and that's kind of, then staff can follow up with you. But I don't want you to think that means we're not hearing your concerns and responding to them. In a town hall-like format, we're more able to kind of go back and forth and answer questions and, you know, kind of get more engaged in deeper aspects of the issue. But just know that anything you shared tonight, everything is taken to heart. We go back with staff. We make sure those concerns are followed up on. And typically, staff will actually reach out to you afterwards and discuss kind of what's going on with your concerns. So thank you all for being here. I'm glad to see so many engaged and taking part in our city government. Thank you.
Yeah, so let me just make sure what our mayor pro tem is saying. That by state law, when we have citizen participation comments, we can hear what you're saying, but we're not able to respond. That's not because we don't want to, it's because we're following state law. The second one is during a public hearing, the same thing when you're speaking. We are not allowed to speak with you, so we're not engaging you, but it doesn't mean we don't hear you and it doesn't mean that we don't take to heart what you're saying. So thank you for bringing that point up. I want to take a moment too and say congratulations to our Terrell High School athletic program, to Coach Sedbury, to the players. High school success with our athletes don't just happen. They begin early. And with that said, I have a couple of individuals that we're going to recognize this evening from the North Texas Longhorn Summer Track Club. I want to congratulate those who are in the track club and who are being recognized this evening. The following athletes have been selected as the TAAF Athletes of the Year for the 2025 track season. The Female Athlete of the Year is Decada Booker. Decata? Decata Booker, yeah, Decata Booker. Made it to the TAAF State Games of Texas in the 100-meter dash, the state finalist in the 200-meter dash, won a silver medal as a member of the 14-and-under girls' 4x100-meter relay and won a bronze medal as a member of the 14-and-under girls' 4x400-meter relay. Ms. Booker, if you would, please come forward and let us recognize you. You get to stay there while I introduce the male athlete of the year and then I'm going to come take some photos and then the council as a group will take some photos. Aiden Walker Woods won a bronze medal in the 400-meter dash, won a bronze medal as a member of the 14-and-under boys' 4x100-meter relay and was a member of the state finalist in the 14-and-under boys' 4x100-meter relay. Aiden, if you would, please come forward. So there's a Woods at the back of the room that's filming. Is that your daddy or is that your grand, who is that? That's your dad? Those that don't know, he was a former employee of Carmona's Tex-Mex and Cantina. Oh, and there's your wife. Good, good to see y'all. We are extremely proud of these student athletes and look forward to assisting them in their athletic endeavors in high school, college and beyond. Congratulations to each and every, both of you, sir.
Coach, you want to say something?
Oh, no.
This one is for you. Congratulations. Let's put it right here and take a photo and then we'll have the council come up. Is that good? All right. Hold on, hold on, hold on. And council members, would y'all please come forward? Sean, congratulations. Did you get, did he get your speed or the wife's speed? That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Who are you? Coach. Can you get everybody? Do we need to switch? Are we presenting? You need to take another? No, you're all right. Are the parents with Sean? Y'all want to come forward? Let's take a picture real quick. Let's get this done. All right, come on in. I know y'all are very proud of him. Are we ready? Can we get out? Thank you. Congratulations. Good to see you. Coach, good to see you. Thank you for calling. Yes, yes. We have our next group that we're going to recognize. We're going to do those individually. So if y'all would, please come forward. One at a time. As we call your name, if you'll come forward. Yes? Yeah, if you would.
If y'all are leaving and if y'all are with the track club and you want to leave and let everyone else come in. If you're coming, you're welcome to stay, but.
Yeah, they can come in.
We're going to recess in just a moment as when we get through with the recognitions and swap out.
So who do we have first? Let me.
Nicole should know it. You need to be on the guest network.
All right, this is for our Terrell Citizens Academy that we recently had. It was held from September the 11th of 2025 through November the 4th of 2025. The first recipient is Debbie Clark. If you would, please come forward.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Again, the next recipient would be Erin Conway. Erin Conway? Oh, yeah. What a difficult one. Good, thank you. Congratulations. And let me see. Angie Cooper? I'm surprised, I'm surprised this one isn't in maroon. Come on up here, girl. Congratulations.
Thank you, love.
Claudia Mata? Claudia, hey, congratulations. Leonard Paul?
All Our Case, E.O. Terrell, 2013.
Anema Stewart, if you would, please.
Oh, yeah.
And George Vargas, hey, man. All right, you want a group picture? Council, if y'all would, please come down, please, officer. Huh? Can we get? I don't think, no, I don't think so. If you want to leave there, just. Look at you.
How are you?
I'm doing good. Doing good, doing good. Good to see you.
Got to see you.
Congratulations. Are y'all? See, next year, now y'all need to run for city council.
Hey, Erin, I know you're tall, but. Your hips are back there.
There we go.
All right, that's my friend.
Congratulations. Congratulations again, again.
All right, if the, Terrell, the TCA group, if you would, please go back to our Tommy Spencer room. I think there's some refreshments back there and you can take photos with whomever you have with you.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
All right, council. Council, if there's no. All right, council, if there's no objection, the mayor would like to suspend the rules and move that we go into executive session and allow time for those who want to speak to come in. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we so move.
action if any on items discussed in executive session. Counsel, are there any motions? Hearing none, we'll move forward with our meeting. At this time, we would hear remarks from visitors, so again, if you're not here to speak on something that is a public hearing currently, then if you would, please come forward. All right? If you would, please state your name and address.
My name's Matthew Farr. I live at 1620 Griffith Avenue in Terrell, Texas. I've presented you all with some information over a Facebook post today. Also, I have a full 32-page lease agreement for one of our council members not living in the city of Terrell. I would like an investigation, and if it is, comes out to be true, we would like a resignation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, anyone else? All right, next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Counsel, this is discuss, this is all of 4-1 through 4-7. We may consider the consent agenda as, as all-in-one, or we may pull a agenda item out if you so wish to do so. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Of a motion, is there a second? There's a motion from Phil Robertson, our mayor pro tem, District 5, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on and the vote allows present. Our next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, item 5.1 is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding a zone change from agricultural AG to single-family 7.5, SF 7.5, single-family 16, SF 16, executive estates EE, retail R, and commercial C.
Do that, do that one more time for the record.
Item 5.1 is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding a zone change from agricultural AG, single-family 7.5, SF 7.5, single-family 16, SF 16, executive states EE, retail R, and commercial C to plan development mixed-use residential PD on approximately 1,544.50 acres of land, PD 25-3118.
All right, this is going to be handled by Janet Wampler.
Mayor and counsel, I stood before you back on September the 16th and made a presentation for this act, this item, number item 5-1 and 5-2. We ask for the decision to be postponed. Today's staff requests that we reopen this application and present to you and move into the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Jenna. So at this, at this time, this is the public hearing. We are here, I'll open the public hearing to hear remarks and receive comments regarding the zone change from ag, AG, single-family 7.5, SF 7 dash, SF dash 7.5, single-family 16, SF dash 16, executive estates EE, retail R, and commercial C to plan development mixed-use residential PD on approximately 1,544.50 acres of land. Our PD number is 25-3118. If you would, please come forward. The first one, I think, is Beto Mesa? Beto? Beto? Is he inside or outside? Can we get someone outside, please, to call these? Okay, thank you.
I apologize for that, I couldn't hear.
No, you're fine.
Good evening, council. My name is Beto Mesa, 136 East McCowsky Street. City council members and fellow citizens of Terrell, today we stand at a crossroads. The Terra Development, Terranova Development Project threatens to change the fabric of our community. As I spoke last week, possible division among our neighbors allows a community character and a strain to our resources and bring irreversible changes, and not to mention increase in tax in our property. Some of the things that I've spoken to some of my neighbors in the East McCowsky Street and San Jacinto area, some of them have spoken and we've come in agreement that there is insufficient consideration of residents' concerns. Residents have expressed concerns about not only traffic noise and all those other things, but just, just how it's going to impact our city. But some might argue that the council hasn't adequately addressed these concerns or taken sufficient steps to mitigate the potential negative effects of the development. Another issue we spoke about was overdevelopment. Some residents feel that Terranova is too large and would fundamentally change the character of Terrell, and they might argue, they also argue that the city should prioritize more modest growth or ensure that development aligns with the community's values and priorities. Another, another bullet point that we spoke about or that they mentioned was unclear benefits for us, the existing residents. Even though I've only lived here for five months, I really consider myself, my heart is here in, in Terrell. Some argue that might, they question whether the development would provide sufficient benefits for us existing residents, such as improved infrastructure, enhanced services, and affordable housing options. Without clear benefits, some residents view the development as prioritally benefiting the developers rather than the community. Some residents also feel that the council should ensure that the project aligns with the community's best interests. And I'm just here to encourage you all to, to put the people before anything else, and we hope that we make the right decision, and then we can move forward, and, and we don't need outside developers to make city, to make Terrell a great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Again, if you have not filled out a form to speak, if you would, please so at this time. Pamela, is it Robertson?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, can I bend it down? Can you hear?
Yes, please.
Hi, Pamela Robertson, Four Birds on Court, Terrell. Y'all are familiar with me. We've been going through this, and we're just, I want to thank Phil for holding his town hall yesterday to hear us again. We're just asking, again, to consider the size of this development, first-time developer. I realize it's a long-term, and again, the way our society is, economic-wise, things are changing less than a year down the road, you don't know what's going to happen, and you're, you're trying to zone, go from, I understand going from the ag to the residential, et cetera, but to do this master plan, all-in-one for the whole 1,500 acres, I think is just a little aggressive. And we just ask that you phase it out, make sure it's done, make sure that you hold the developer to the agreement. That's our biggest concerns, and other than that, we just don't want our area connected, which can be done without connecting us, because I've already invested in, checked into all the legal, legalities on that, so.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Rita Bain, Rita Bain.
First of all, thank you, council, for all of your hard work and your service. It's much appreciated. I want to discuss something that we haven't discussed before, and Rita Bain, once again, at 137 Birds on Court, Terrell. Health and safety of every citizen in Terrell should be number one. We have a previous Nike missile base in Terrell. We have the launch site that this development is going to be built around. If you look at the overall picture of what took place in the 1950s, 60s, up to 1970, and the chemicals, the process of everyday operating procedure is listed as such. This unclassified document pretty well spells it out. If you look at the Hanford records, anyone with Freedom of Information Act can, can look at this. It's DRXTH-AS-IA-83A016. This is from the U.S. Army Toxic and Hazardous Materials Agency. The daily process and assessment conducted at any former Nike missile site through interviews with Army personnel, through all of that period, this is what was stated. Normal operation at a Nike missile site included the use of an onsite disposal of solvents. Those solvents would be trichlorethylene, trichlorethane, battery acid. They actually had a battery shack, a acid shack onsite, a six-by-six with a concrete floor. Most people are unaware of this. Hydraulic fluid, and they labeled these compounds as environmentally persistent, perpetual compounds disposed of on a daily basis on these sites. Then, they used it for the Army motor pool. They performed maintenance there on a daily basis for 10 to 12 vehicles. Then, in 1971, it was given for the common good to the Terrell ISD. They serviced all of their buses there in maintenance. When you look at trichlorethylene, trichlorethane, oh, and lead, let's not forget lead. The acid for these batteries had to be changed monthly. There was spillage on a routine basis on this site. The potential is there. It is real, and high probability did occur. So, to ask that the brownfield-
Finish your comments, please.
Response program, which is free by the Railroad Commission, to come in and look at this site is not adequate. We've got 60 years of sedimentation down to clay, and that has to be considered. Every citizen in this room-
If you would, please address the matter to council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. They have the right to know.
All right, thank you for your comments. Our next item, our next participant is Marshall Johnson. Marshall Johnson?
Well, I'm not much for speeches, but anyhow, Marshall Johnson, 10-264 Country Road 304. I built a wetland for duck hunting, and you've all cut a deal with almost everybody over there except me that for being annexed, and you all, the county paved 305, look, you could land a plane there. And if you go over there, and then when you all annexed it in, now it looks like a bomb crater. I mean, the road's never been touched again. And what I'm concerned about is the fact that I've already got houses being built across the road from me right now, and all I get is trash blowing across my fence into my, into my sloughs, and if this, I think it's 500 acres, 300 acres, right against my fence in the back of me, it's going to impact me quite a bit. And anyhow, it just, it's going to, I'll have nothing. I mean, with the traffic, and you're overbuilding, I mean, or, you're, I mean, I mean, it's going to look like down here at Randall O. I mean, why would anybody, I mean, if all the businesses go out there where we're going, where we live, I mean, they're going to vague at Terrell. But anyhow, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Bob Witt?
My name is Bob Witt, and I live at 208 Rock Hollow Drive, Terrell, Texas. A little afraid to say that, because I've been taking a lot of heat since I got here, but anyhow, just to, just to bring everybody for history, I was raised on that farm, been there since 1949, to Leas, on the Witt Farm out there. I sold it to McCray Group of Companies back in 2006, and they got in trouble, and we just did an interest-only loan. I have not, they paid me off, okay? I have not done any business with this development, but I do know Hugo. But anyhow, all I'm, all I'm saying is, he showed me the plans of what their development is. I can't speak to solving all these problems. Somebody wanted me to pay for the fireworks out there, putting the fire department in, am I going to pay for that? You know, I can't speak to that, but all I can say, as I- But all I can say, is I liked it because as I looked at the development and what he had in it, there was a lot of space for people to live, for people to move around, there's gonna be a grocery store in there. And my first thought was is that's gonna be neat. That's not somebody coming in here trying to build a minimum-sized lot, smallest lots as you can get in there, jamming everybody in there. It looks like it's gonna be a great development. And I think somewhere or another that these problems can be solved because I, it's gonna be a 20-year deal. You know, it's not gonna hit this right now. I just think that the quality of it and the preparedness of it is something that is worth looking at and something worth considering because I, I just think it's gonna be a, a nice place, it's like a little miniature deal, you know, so. But anyhow, I'll get out of your way, but you know, they're worried about changing the structure of Terrell. Me and you've been here, all, all three of us been here every day of our life. It changed a long time ago. It's already changed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Tim Lambert.
My name is Tim Lambert. I reside at 1797 West Alamosa, Terrell, Texas. I'd like to say good evening to the mayor and council. I'm here to support the Terranova project. I understand growth is inevitable. The best thing to plan for is to grow correctly and ensure basic needs of the citizens are met. I'm happy to see a new master plan community that includes the parks, the hiking trails, the biking trails, and all the arteries to control the traffic growth. I encourage to vote and approve this master plan. It's, it's a zoning that is nothing like we've seen in Kaufman County. So I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Eric Brown. Would staff please reach out, Eric Brown?
Sorry, y'all watching on the delay 30 seconds. Howdy, my name's Eric Brown. I live at 105 Point Setta Circle. I realize I'm in the minority here, but I do think it's a good development, you know? If, I would say if, if I had to look at things as what they are, I don't know that anybody in Terrell wants to see a bunch of ag land or ranches be turned into homes, but that land doesn't have cattle on it anymore. It's just sitting there. So, you know, I'd like to at least see something happen to it that would be a well-planned community that would offer a bunch back to the community. I personally want to thank my council member, Phil, for having the town hall and just keeping everybody updated on Facebook as to what is going on. I know there's been a lot of information out there, but based on everything I'm looking at, what this will bring to the community is walking trails connecting all the neighborhoods, 26 new public parts, each with its own specific amenities, building major thoroughfares in and out so to mitigate traffic impacts, setting aside acreage for a new police station, new fire station, acreage for a new middle school, and a, a big build out for, think of the Rockwall Harbor-style restaurant and retail area that I think our town is lacking in shops and entertainment. You know, I have two young kids, and I hate to say this because I love Terrell and I don't ever see myself moving, but they're constantly like, there's nothing to do here, Dad. Let's go down to Fornie. Now, do I want to be like Fornie? No, they didn't do the infrastructure right, but I think this build can. I mean, with all of these plans to build all these roads, I think it's good. You know, homes valued between 400 and 1.5 million. Everyone's talking about a depletion of resources. Well, we don't have anything to add to these resources because we have no new resources or, or revenue coming in. These homes would at least help us get there. They're also gonna annex in, voluntarily annexing in, right? These, let's just pretend that this doesn't go through, right? It's not like there's gonna be cattle put back onto this property and it's gonna stay ag. They're gonna try and make their money somewhere else. They're gonna piece these places out, and everything everybody's really afraid of here, these smaller homes on, or larger homes on smaller parcels cramming it in like Fornie, that's what's gonna happen. So, my hope is that this development goes through. It's planned out over the 20 years and it slow rolls, and we get everything that everybody wants with stuff to do here, but a slow growth where we can focus on infrastructure. So, thank you all, everybody, for your time.
Thank you for your comments. James Heaton, James Heaton.
My name's James Heaton. I live at 7 Birds on Court, about 200 feet from where all this fiasco is gonna happen. Contrary to my comrades here, I don't think it's a good development. I think that this is gonna, when you look at, look around this room, the average age is probably 55, so there aren't breeders among us. Most of them are, are older Americans. And consequently, when you put all these high-dollar homes, these people are gonna have to have two incomes to support these homes. Well, guess what that means? They're gonna have to live and work someplace, and you're not gonna pay for a million-dollar home on a job in Terrell, Texas. So guess where they gotta go? Out, in, out, in. You don't have the infrastructure to support this, and it will take 10 to 20 years to get enough infrastructure. You don't have the schools to support 25,000 people dropping into this place in, in a matter of a couple of years. You don't have the roads to support heavy equipment moving back and forth that are gonna destroy the infrastructure that's already here. I, I, I just can't understand, I moved here four years ago because it was a small town, and it was, the, the street that I live on is quiet and it doesn't have a lot of, of road rage, and I mean, this is where I live, and I'm too damn old to move. So, you know, it's in your hands. It's in your hands. Do the right thing. Do the right thing for all the people. This isn't about building a new Frisco in the middle of Terrell. Okay? That's, that's just, that's all I got for you. A million and a half dollar home. Do you see any million and a half dollar homes in Terrell right now? You don't, and there's a reason. It can't attract that kind of people. And those kind of people, can you see them shopping at Walmart? Yeah. Can you see people like me walking through fancy shopping malls in Terranova? Not gonna happen. We're gonna get run out of that area on a rail. So, good luck. Godspeed.
Thank you for your comment. Juanita Rector, I think. Juanita.
Hi, I'm Juanita Rector. I'm a native. I grew up in Fornie, and I've lived in Terrell and out in Lawrence for 26 years. And I'm here because Terranova is really a city within a city. Right now, Terrell sits at around 24,000 people. I'm not really included because I'm technically in the county on 1392. But the thing is, Terranova is going to double the population of Terrell. And in that doubling, we've got 3,500 homes, you've got a couple. Okay, that's 7,000 people. If they have two children, that's another 7,000 people. That's 14,000. Then you've got the apartments coming in, and that's 1,500 apartments. Again, two people, one apartment, so you've got 3,000 people. If they have two children, you're gonna have another three. So we're looking at a total right now of over 18,000 people, close to 20, really, which is almost the size of Terrell today. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the water. We don't have the electricity. The Texas grid is suffering. North Texas Water Department, they're suffering. We don't have it here. What I would love to suggest is that the city council start considering a green space, an open space. I lived in Boulder, Colorado for 16 years. We saw that Denver was encroaching on Boulder. So the people of the city voted in a .15 sales tax to buy property that became available around the city of Boulder. And we passed it, and it's still going today. As fact, today, they just voted on making it permanent after 1967. They're bringing in $15 million a year to buy property. They have bought land for open space, which is trails and parks, things that the people can do even for agriculture. And this can all be research. It's easy to pull up, to pull up Boulder, Colorado, open space, green space. And if we could implement something like that here, we would give the kids a place to go. They would have a place to go play, they would have the parks. We would put it in ourselves because we'd be paying for it with our sales tax. Because with Terranova, we're gonna have to pay sales tax anyhow to put that, that infrastructure in. So why not give something to the community and make any people that come out here want to be in Terrell because we have that small-town feel? We really do not want to become Fornie. I grew up in Fornie. My family was there when it was 360 people. When my mother moved us there, it was 680. So I know what it's like to grow up in a small town, and I think everybody here feels the same way. We grew up country. I want to stay country. I don't want to be in Dallas. I didn't want to be in Denver. That's why when I was living in Boulder for 16 years, I voted for these things. And it's still there, and it's enriched the city and the county because the county eventually implemented it as well. So when you've got 600,000 acres that Boulder has bought, and they're tending to it, and they have the money coming in, why not do this for the community? Because everybody that I know wants to live in Boulder. They don't want to live in Aspen and Vail and all those places. They can't afford it, but you can afford to live there. And everybody goes there to say, oh, how beautiful this is. Well, it's beautiful because they voted that in. And this is something I would like for you to all, for y'all to consider, please.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Gwendolyn, Gwendolyn Kanz.
Hello, my name is Gwendolyn Kanz-McLeod. I live at 416 Laurel Trail North. I'm a lifelong Terrell resident. I graduated from Terrell High School. I've spent the last 20 years serving this community as a dentist, and I am against the zoning changes that allow Terranova to be built. I do understand that this area is growing quickly and progress is coming this way. We can't stop it, but I do believe it's imperative that Terrell directs that growth and progress in a way that maintains the small-town community that makes Terrell special and that we say no to urban sprawl. My main concerns are increased traffic, lack of infrastructure to support this large neighborhood, an increased tax burden, and the future of clean water and air. DFW has been ranked number, has been ranked number three globally in the world for the worst transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions. And so, we have 4,400-plus new homes, all these cars coming in, all this traffic coming in, that's gonna increase traffic and the pollution that comes with it. At the same time, paving over all this green space and all that farmland is gonna decrease the ability of our community to deal with that pollution. If I can remind you of elementary school science, plans are what take the carbon dioxide, a greenhouse gas, which is basically poison to us, and turn it into oxygen, which we all need. Less grass and trees means poor air quality, less oxygen, and an increase in conditions like asthma, COPD, bronchitis, and even lung cancer. There's also the question of water availability to support the additional population growth. As the former person said, it's no secret that there are grave concerns of water scarcity in the northeast Texas area, and that needs to be taken seriously. The day people move into these homes, they're gonna need schools and police and fire services, water and sewer, and roads maintained. And let's be honest, those are things that the city of Terrell is already struggling to provide the people who live here. And it means that those of us who do live here will have to bear the property tax burden to pay for building those things. And, you know, the Terrell I grew up in has changed a lot, but it does still have a small-town community feel that I think needs to be preserved. I still feel safe walking the streets of this town just like I did when I was 10 years old. Allowing Terrell to become just another bit of urban sprawl is not good for anyone. I think we should take a lesson from what we've seen happen in Fornie with windmill farms and those other developments there, and let developers and future potential residents know that Terrell does care about preserving a more country way of life. We care about our environment and providing clean air and water for our children and for our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Linda Jackson Bailey, Linda.
Hello, hello, hello. I thank y'all for doing what y'all did on Jamie Foxx. Y'all cleaned it, but you have cleaned it. I need it cleaned. This is not clean, it's nasty. If you can come through and see it, you'll say it's nasty. So if you come through there on Dick Street and Jamie Way.
So, this is a public hearing on?
But I still need it cleaned. I paid taxes to.
If, would staff please?
That would be Dick's. That would be Dick's and Jamie Way.
Yeah, yeah, that, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk about that, but this is a public hearing regarding Terranova. But thank you for your comment. If staff would get with her, please. Our next item, I mean, our next person is Casey Teket.
Good evening, council. Thanks for being here tonight. All willing and able, please bow your head in prayer with me if you would, please. Heavenly Father, we pray that you be in this room this evening, that you bless our council, you bless the people making these decisions on our behalf, Lord, that you write your names on our hearts. Lord, that you would guide us with your mighty right hand. In your name we pray, amen. So we moved our family here in 2020 to get away from the sprawl of Dallas. We have lived all over North Texas, Ulyss, Denton, Dallas, Arlington. And when we got here, we had something special. We could still see the stars early in the night. By the time 2023 had rolled around, some of the commercial businesses had moved in, the soul of the city had already changed. I have some open-ended questions I don't expect answers for tonight. Juanita, hit it on the head. How do you expect to provide for a city that you double in population when every single street is a one-way road? How do you expect to move heavy machinery into these neighborhoods to build this out, even if it's 20 years? It takes us 20 years to fix one intersection. I've never seen a town move slower in my entire life. And if we can't trust you with the infrastructure today that we have in town, how can we trust you with a brand-new infrastructure? All of these things promised in Terranova, even if you accomplish them in 20 years, will place an obscene burden on the people that moved out here to be in the country away from the city. We are those breeders. We've had all four of our children here in Terrell. We love it. Phil, never looking better, man. You're the lifeline we depend on for information. Frankly, this hearing shouldn't be happening. This is completely misrepresented. I've not talked to anybody that wants this development to go through, and you will be pushing us out if this goes through. Our young family will leave. Whether it's today, tomorrow, doubling the city will change the soul of this town. We will not be a small town anymore. We will be like Fornie. We will be like Dallas. I gotta go in every day. I gotta start traffic at 5:00 a.m. every morning. If that's what we want, put it through. And to my understanding, learning from some new friends this evening, that's already on the way. It's, it's troubling that this got passed without representation from the people here. Truly, any of you. How many of your constituents came up to you and said, you know what we need? Terranova. That's what we need, Terranova. Of course, growth is coming for Kaufman County. Of course, it will be here, but this is the wrong way. This is the wrong way. I foresee gigantic projects moving into our neighborhoods, keeping us from getting out of the driveway, and a city that can't communicate with the citizens, not able to tell us when that's gonna happen. I went to vote today, the power went out at the courthouse. At any given moment, the water goes off in our house, and we have no idea why. The wind blows, the power goes off in our house. If you can't take care of that, how are you gonna take care of Terranova? Terranova is not Terrell. We are Terrell. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Emma, Emily Rico, Emily Rico. Again, is there anyone who hasn't been able to speak that would like to speak? I need you to fill out a form and turn it in at this time. Emily Rico?
My name is Emily Rico. Due to the nature of my job, my address is protected from public record, but I have provided it to staff prior to this meeting starting. First of all, I just want to say, as other people have said tonight, that development is kind of a foregone conclusion for the state of Texas. I understand that the legislature often takes power from your hands, from you and staff's hands, and you receive the brunt of the complaints for it, even though really, you don't have any control. But this isn't one of those situations, and I think it's very important, when you do have a choice, to make sure we're considering the long-term effects, including the effects on future residents, if and when this property is inevitably developed. I, I'm not naive to think that development is going to stop. I'm not naive to think that development is going to stop, that by the time it's done, there won't be a dirt patch in the state of Texas that doesn't have something on it. But I think there are several holes in the plan that I saw that I think would be beneficial to address prior to this being approved. The biggest issue that I saw is I was just wondering why this was designated as a straight zoning change rather than a planned development. I think that ultimately, I hope this business succeeds, but we don't know if it will. And if somebody takes over this property in the future, what's going to happen to it then? A lot of people bring up Rowlett and the Blue Lagoon situation. Well, this is exactly how you avoid that, by putting in more requirements and more restrictions right now, so that if and when the property changes hands, it can't be changed. I think it's important to, and that's important for the future residents that will come along when this property gets developed, into whatever it's going to be, whether it's this or a different development, to make sure that those restrictions that are put in place are rigid and can't be changed later on. And I think that the way to do that is by designating this as a planned development rather than just allowing for straight zoning changes. I do appreciate the developer being willing to be annexed. I think that, as we all know, if this was in the county, it'd kind of be a free-for-all at that point, and I appreciate his willingness to come into the city. But I think putting any types of restrictions in place right now without some kind of designation for what's going to happen if this property changes hands in the future is a mistake. Because then what happens to those pictures? We don't know what happens after that point. And I think that's important to keep in mind for future residents as well as our current residents. I do appreciate the commercial and multifamily being somewhat separated in the plans that I saw from the existing lots, but I think we should consider, I wish there had been more consideration of the existing property sizes and creating more of a transitional zone, especially for the existing lot sizes, for something comparable. I think that ultimately having this loosely-defined medium-density properties backing up to properties that already exist is kind of ill-informed, and I think that using restrictions that allow for more similarly-sized properties along the existing property line would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no other forms or requests, so at this time, we, oh, here we go. Please come forward. Anyone else?
I've heard one in, too.
Okay. All right. Latasha, if you would, please state your name and your address.
My name is Latasha Trammell. I live at 15372 Longspur Lane. And good evening, council. I just want to say, thank y'all for bringing Terranova into the neighborhood. It's really unique. It's nice. I like all the different activities that are going to be there, the different ways of bringing out the parks and whatnot in there. I just want to say thank y'all, and I'm for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Matthew Farr. Was it? I don't have it.
My name is Matthew Farr again. 1620 Griffith Avenue. It's no secret I'm opposed to Terranova over health and safety concerns around the property of the Nike Missile Silo Base. The railroad commission has not been truthful on many occasions, and I believe that we need to have a third party actually come in and do an inspection that's on the soil that is not the developer and that is not the city, so there's a non-bias reading of the environment. We are completely saturated right now out there, so any development around me will flood me. That's all I've got to say. Everybody else has basically already hit the points that we don't want this to happen. We want the small town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, last call for a form. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move on to our next item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We bring to you tonight ordinance number 3118, zoning change PD 25-11. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, amending Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell and changing the zoning classification from agriculture, AG, single-family 7.5 SF 7.5, single-family 16 SF 16, executive estates, EE, retail R, and commercial C to planned development mixed-use residential PD on approximately 1,544.50 acres of land depicted on Exhibit B land map and described and depicted on the deeds attached here to as Exhibit A and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication, and an effective date.
Jana, if you would, please come forward. So, council, if you have any questions to Jana regarding, I have one. Of all the things that were discussed in the public hearing, was there anything that wasn't addressed that was presented to the council?
No, sir. I believe we covered that. Either it was staff presentation or when the developer came up and made their presentation.
I think so, too. And I would go as far to say that of all the developments that the city has been involved in, this Terranova project has been probably the most vetted by a council that I've seen. And I recall having discussions either one-on-one or with staff or with a council member regarding all of the things that I've heard this evening. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jana?
Was the public ever notified?
This isn't, this is a council meeting. All right.
Well, I'm hot on the legislation. So I continue learning based on this legislation. And this is '89, so there was '88, '89. This one was heavy land use. So they passed legislation that took away our ability as a city to govern how development happens around and in a city. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
As a result of that, we can either have a developer who asks to be annexed into the city, where we now have control over how that development moves forward, versus them not asking and putting in a municipal utility district. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is what Fornie is.
Correct.
Many muds. So we also have a developer that has met with all of us, you councilmen, and had these discussions. I think my frustration is not with us, is the fact that unfortunately, after spending a week learning how the legislature passed this past session, that we do not have control and made the statement that we will no longer, as long as they have anything to do with it, they will do their due diligence to make us governing and listening to the voice of the people who actually live here difficult. So I appreciate your due diligence in not just checking the boxes, but having the hard conversations. So, Mayor, I just, I have, I continue to learn that our, the laws that have been passed, all 262 that had to deal with cities, were not for us. And the development is coming, and they, our state legislators, forgot that people live here. And the only way that your voices, our voices, are going to be heard is if we literally visit them and make sure it doesn't happen. But right now, with the little control we do have, it's going to be challenging.
Thank you for your comments.
Jana, I would like to first thank you and staff for the hard work you've done, listening to our community and working with this developer to ensure the concerns of our citizens are worked into the proposed development agreement. I think that, you know, in a situation like this, where, you know, I think from the outset, the way this issue was framed, as though we have a great deal of control over what's going to happen here, is a bit flawed. When the majority of the land, it's, or a big chunk of the land that's part of this development lies outside the city limits, we're left with a choice. And the cautionary tale I always use is, of course, the windmill community adjacent to us. The situation there, of course, they lie outside the city limits of Fornie and therefore have often been considered a bit of a burden on that community because they don't have law enforcement oversight, they don't have utilities oversight, they don't have any kind of public safety oversight, they don't have to bill to their city standards. Therefore, that area becomes sort of a, it's a challenge to its adjacent city. In the case of Terranova, this proposed development, you know, we, the beneficial aspect is that we are able to say, hey, if you'll work with us and allow yourself to be annexed into the city, then we get some oversight on the law enforcement piece, we get the revenue from the development to use to improve our city, our streets, our drainage, our utilities. I have a lot to say about this matter because, over the past months, I've spent, you know, I've spent a lot of time examining from every angle, talking to a lot of the wisest people I know in our city, trying to understand how it might impact us in the long term. And these are hard decisions, you know? Even though, even though we really and truly don't have much of an option to do anything about it, it still weighs heavily on me when I have to rule in a way that isn't going to be popular with, because I try to be the voice of our people. I've listened to so many citizens. There's a very vocal group who opposes this. There's a much less vocal group, but very sizable, that also is excited about, you know, the 26 new parks aspect, the walking trails, the harbor-style restaurant and, you know, store development, possible town square, those kinds of things. What I do want to say is we have a lot of developers looking around Terrell right now trying to do projects, and, you know, some of them would look at a piece of land like this and go, let's just throw up 2,000 apartments in a year or less, and then we immediately have a traffic burden. But in some ways, to look on the bright side of this, Terranova is a bit of a hedge against fast-paced growth, because this is a phased development that isn't going to be completed until 2045, right? We're talking about phases happening at a slow pace over time, over the next 20 years. So whereas it could be piecemeal, one day apartments here, next day another apartment's here, et cetera, and if, even though we aren't able to do a lot to push this developer away, if, if our community did via, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jana, if our community were able to sort of via protest and via our outrage and signage, you know, make them feel unwelcome and they left, well, then what do we get then? Then we would have, very likely, a lot of potentially a mud and a windmill farms-type situation. And you might also have a situation where you would have, you know, each individual tracts of the land being sold off to individual developers with no overarching plan, just, okay, we'll do 2,000 apartments here, we'll do some low-income homes here, we'll do that. It would be a completely piecemeal development. What we have to remember is, we live in a town that's 35 miles east of downtown Dallas, so it's not realistic for us to think we can just put a dome over it and put it on an antique shelf. Whereas, you know, for me, it's so important to me to maintain our small-town identity, our rural identity. As I see it, this buys us time to slowly respond to the development as it occurs. Over 20 years, some is built, we look at it, we go, okay, we need more roads now, we need more infrastructure, we got the money from the tax revenue, let's build this new road, let's build this new infrastructure, let's build these new utilities components. And over time, you can respond as it grows, as opposed to just saying, let's throw us all at, am I correct?
That is exactly right.
You know, let's see. But it is bittersweet. Though I wish it were a smaller development, yes. I wish it were shorter tours, yes. I voted against the larger tours. But that funding mechanism will allow us to make this area a really nice area for people to live in, and the entire city can take advantage of these 26 new parks with all-new amenities, et cetera. You know, I live here, too. I grew up here. I love this town to a ridiculous degree, probably unnecessary degree, and I don't want to see it change, but, you know, it's a wave we have to brace for. And I think, you know, growing in a way that's smart and that has a phased and planned approach as opposed to many different developers doing things quickly with no overarching plan, it's not the smartest way to go, you know? And I want it understood that our city's not going out seeking these developments. It's not like the City of Terrell is going, let's find these people to develop. It's, we have private landowners selling their land to private developers. And I don't think we'd want the world to work any other way, where government is standing in the way of private business all the time. You know, I think most would share the opinion that that's not the right way to conduct ourselves. Again, this is not a rubber stamp. It's a very ironclad development agreement and in which we've listened to, we have some members of our community who I applaud, who've been here every meeting to voice their concerns. And those concerns have all been taken into consideration. We've, now we've taken the environmental piece, and there's some ironclad things they must do to ensure that those environmental issues are addressed. Am I correct there?
That's exactly right.
And then, and the things like drainage issues, our traffic studies, you know, getting out in front of some of these potential ingress and egress issues with traffic, those concerns have all been heard and have been addressed in the agreement to the best of our ability, you know? When you're in a situation where the development is likely coming, the best we can hope to do is let's get an agreement that is the best we can get it, right? That's the most beneficial for our community. And so I just, please, do not be discouraged. In many ways, you know, I think as some have addressed here, I think all these new parks and amenities and new, you know, one of the good things is it's going to bring in the tax revenue we need to help us with our aging infrastructure. The biggest challenge in Terrell, 1873 infrastructure. We have aging roads and pipes that are, like my colleague often says, pipes that are just, they've left this world, they're no longer there anymore. So we need the money. This stuff is incredibly expensive to fix, and with these, the additional revenue, we can start to fix things like our, there's some parts of this town that even have curbs, much less sidewalks. We need curbs, we need sidewalks, we need, we need infrastructure, we need drainage. And the money we need to get that can come from the tax revenue that this development generates. That's where I stand with it, and I thank staff for what you've done, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think if I ask this question again, and it may be insanity, that I'm going to get another answer. If this is denied, can the developer still build this anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask it again. If we deny this, and we don't put teeth in it, and we say, this is what we want, this is some of the concerns from our citizens, this is their concerns, address this, and we don't do that, and we deny it, can the developer still build it?
If we deny this application tonight, then the developer will withdraw their voluntary annexation, and they will not be required to build to our standards and our ordinances. Only in that portion, yes.
This is a council meeting, please?
Let me correct that, please. Part of this is in the City of Terrell. They will be held to those standards. Part of this is in the ETJ, where we only have plating authority to make sure that their fire lanes and their ingress-egress is properly placed and follows protocol. But the part, the largest part that's in the county, we would not have any control.
No control?
No, ma'am. That would be between...
No control?
We would have no control in the county.
A little control?
No control. No, ma'am.
Okay, no control, so we can, we can mandate certain things basically based on our rules for the little part that's in our city?
Yes, ma'am.
So they can build that to our standards?
Yes, ma'am.
But then the other big part that's outside, we won't have no control?
No, ma'am. That's between the developer and the county, and the county does not have our requirements. our requirements.
You should read the legislation.
I know about the legislation. That's why I'm here, that's why I'm frustrated. I know what our legislation are doing, that tells me how people are voting. And to put that kind of pressure on me, I'm not going to accept that pressure. I know why we're here, I know why this room looks the way it looks, I know what's been going on in the ballot, in the little booths. I can't change it. I can't. Our citizens can change it.
Y'all need to run for office.
And not just city office.
I'm talking about state.
We need to make some changes at the state level, regardless of how you pray, and how you cry, and how you repent. If we don't change it at the state level, my hands are tied. Some people don't care about breaking the law. They're fine with that. That don't set good with me and my spirit. I know what the law says, regardless of what I think. As a council member for the city of Terrell, I got to take the information you give me and make the best decision, no matter who looks, no matter how they voted, no matter what the state legislator says. I got to follow that. So with that being said, I'm going to ask this question one more time. If I deny this, there's two portions. One portion I can control a little bit, if they come into the city, the other part's going to be a mud outside the city, they can still build it.
Yes, ma'am.
But they won't have the teeth in it that we may want them to have based on our standards. Is that what you're saying?
The city of Terrell would lose all control.
All control?
Yes, ma'am.
Jan, I'm sure the development agreement is contingent upon the approval of the zoning for the entire plat, right?
Yes.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to our citizens. I think a lot of those concerns have been addressed, but I know what the problem is, I know what the big picture is, and I can't change it. But I, I've asked that question numerous times, thinking I'll get another answer, and I'm going to make the best decision based on what I know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, the staff, and all you guys in municipal development.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on, again, this was a 7-1, is that correct? Vote from PNC? And-
Yes, sir, it was seven, on PNC on, back in August, it was seven to one in favor.
All right, thank you. And the staff recommends, counsel, that we move forward with this development. Is there a motion on ordinance number 3113?
I think it's 3118.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, you're right. Sorry, 3118, ordinance number 3118. Is there a motion? The mayor make a motion to approve ordinance number 3118 as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the mayor, I have a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District 2, to approve ordinance number 3118 as presented. Is there any further discussion? I will at this time make a statement regarding the growth of the city of Terrell and this community, and also Kaufman County. I have always been honest, since I've been mayor, that growth is coming. I've always told everyone that. Anybody who misleads you and tells you that the city of Terrell will not grow is lying to you. If anybody tells you that this county is not going to grow is lying to you. If you think you live in Forney, Crandall, or Kaufman, and you're not going to experience growth, they're lying to you. I served on the, I served on the executive board for North Central Texas Council of Governments, I know the growth patterns and where they're coming. And unfortunately, that's just the truth. I'm not going to mislead you, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you. The other thing that I would tell you, that I was born and raised in Terrell, we, we, we used to run this city, this town, back then it was just a little town, barefoot. All the kids did. We would pick up, where there's homes now, there were fields, and we would play pickup baseball and softball. I hate the fact that my grandkids will not experience that in this city of Terrell, but the truth is, they're not. I hate it. But I also am elected to serve this community and serve this town, and the city of Terrell very honored to do so. And I'm going to do that to the best of my ability. And I will stand up for each and every one of these council members today, and tell you that their heart and their soul is in this community. They would never do anything, anything that would disadvantage us. And us is the citizens of the city of Terrell. So I want to thank them for their diligent work, their, their involvement in the discussions on this development. Like I said before, I've not ever seen a development where we've had so much discussion, and, and asking the reasons, why are we doing this, and what benefit is it to the city, and what are the other options. Y'all have done tremendous work with this Terranova. I don't know how you could do any more than what you've done. And is it a perfect deal? No, it's not. I'm not going to lie to you. I've never been involved in a deal that was perfect for me or for the city of Terrell. It's a negotiation, that means somebody's going to win a little bit on both sides. And that's how you get there. And that's what, that's what government is. We represent you. And like I said, nothing that I heard today, all of, all of the comments and concerns that were addressed at the podium, it has come from this council, right? If there was something that we don't, and you heard staff say the same thing. If there was something that wasn't covered, then I think that would cause a pause in this process, but I didn't hear that. So again, last statement, and thank you for your work. I have a motion from the mayor, I have a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried and now to vote those present. Our next item on the agenda is 5.3.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, item 5.3 is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding a zone change from retail R to planned development multifamily PD-MF 25-15 on approximately 40.663 acres of land, and identified as part of track 1A, track 3, track 4, and the John C. Hale survey abstract number 202, in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 235024, 235025, and 7672,
Jana, this is you.
Yes, mayor. So like the Terranova, I'm bringing to you another planned development. This is a multifamily, it's out at Crossroads. I have brought this developer back to you back a little over a year ago, well, matter of fact, it was in March of '23, for the Travis. Now they're ready to move forward with Phase 2 and 3, which will be approximately 666 units. It will be a timed phasing. And the city is currently, that area is zone retail, the future land use is a mixed-use neighborhood and highway corridor. And this developer is requesting a planned development for multifamily use on approximately 40 acres. It, the owner is Terrell 8020 Limited, and again, the developer is the Westwood Residential. The first Phase 1 was brought to you all to PNC in February of 2023, and then it was brought to you for consideration in March of '21, 2023, ordinance 2959. The plat application was approved by PNC back in March of '24, and then this board then approved then that plat on April of '24. So now we're asking for, to move forward with this additional information. I, I have maps in there to show you where the locations are, but I do believe that everyone is familiar, we've all toured that area. 14 letters were sent out to abutting landowners, and to date, I've received two responses back in favor of the proposed use. And I will pause, mayor, for the public hearing.
All right. At this time, we will open a public hearing to receive comments regarding a zone change in retail, from retail to planned development multifamily PD-MF 25-15 on approximately 40.663 acres of land, and identified as a part of track 1A, track 3, track 4, and the John C. Hale survey abstract number 202, in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 235024, and 235025, and 7672, PD-M253-3150/2515. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Take your name and address, please.
I'm Carlton Tidwell, I'm president of the Terrell Economic Development Corporation. I reside at 1222 War Admiral Drive in Terrell, Texas, 75160. And I come to you today to ask you to approve this zoning change. As we completed our economic development strategic plan, one of the things that showed up as a real need for Terrell was housing, and especially attainable housing. People who maybe on one income could afford the housing, it's something that was really needed as far as recruiting people to come to Terrell, recruiting employees for businesses. As you know, from updates that I've given you, not only do we have new businesses coming, we have five businesses that are currently here that are expanding. And so they will be hiring, as well as the three new ones. And so I just asked today that you approve the zoning change for this, to give opportunity for the, the employees that'll be hired and coming to Terrell to have attainable housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening. My name is Charles Hodges, 13642 Omega in Dallas. Good to see everybody again. As you might remember, our firm was the master planners for Crossroads, both sides. And we've enjoyed a decade of being able to work out here and enjoyed it very much. The intent for this piece of property was always, and has always been, for density residential. The recipe for great mixed use and great retail is the fact you have people that live in close proximity, and they're walkable to these developments. They don't have to get in the car. And the great compliment that we got, as we started to develop all the infrastructure out here, which is brand-new and adequately designed, is people were walking around the lake before we could even get the benches set. I mean, people were using crossroads, the sidewalks going to the residential, from the residential to the retail, to the restaurants. As an investor in Film Alley personally, we know it's vital to have these things work Monday through Thursday. Friday and Saturday take care of themselves in the retail business. Some of you are very familiar with retail and restaurant, you know, Friday and Saturday handle themselves. If you don't make it Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday can't carry it. So the walkability of this, we wish and want, and I speak for the Schulman family, also our partners in the Film Alley project, we want people to be able to walk. We want walkability to our overall development. It's great when we see people out there fishing in the lake, and they walk. They didn't have to get in the car and drive around to do it. So this walkability issue is paramount to having a successful development, which we want to finish, we're rounding third now, on a 10-year, actually it's been about 11 years, I think, project out here. And we want to see the master plan completed in its entirety. And we would ask for your support for this density residential. It's vital for our successful retail and entertainment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Jeff Lindsay with Westwood Residential, 3198 Parkwood Boulevard. As Jana previously mentioned, we are working on Phase 1 right now, the Travis. Hopefully we'll be opening that up right around the first of the year. We spent a lot of time with our architect, trying to figure out how to site plan this piece of land. And if you'll notice, there's kind of a V shape that is there, and is really non-developable land, simply because you have easements, you have a gas line easement coming this way, a gas line easement coming this way, and a power line easement coming this way. So we've gone through about five or six different iterations to try to find a way that would lay the site out functionally, and as well as maximize what we could get on the property. So, you know, one of the things that we hear a lot of times when we come into communities is there's concern about too many kids that are going to be coming out of the apartment, so on and so forth. And the projects that we build tend to be a split, 75%, roughly one bedrooms, 25% two bedrooms. And we do that because we want to cater to the schoolteachers, the fire department folks, the police officers, the young, single professionals that would like to have a place to live. We tend to build an average unit size somewhere around 800 square feet, so it's a little bit smaller than what you may see with a lot of residential communities. That helps get your monthly price down. And as everybody's read and everybody knows, in our communities these days, having affordable housing is a real need. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move forward with our next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number 3150, zoning change application, PD-25-15, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, amending Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the city of Terrell, and changing the zoning classification from retail R to planned development multifamily PD-MF on approximately 40.663 acres of land, depicted on the foreclosure D sale in Exhibit A, described and depicted on the land boundary plat attached here too as Exhibit B, also included in the site plan in Exhibit C, and building standards as depicted in Exhibit D, and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication, and an effective date.
Jana, if you would please come forward. Anybody have any questions or comments for Jana regarding ordinance number 3150?
So, this is going to be considered attainable housing? Do we have any idea what the, you know, what the rental rate might look like?
If you don't mind, I'd like to invite Jeff Lindsay to come back, and he can answer those questions.
Sure.
It will not necessarily be attainable housing, it's just the price point because of where we will come in with our rents gets that monthly rental rate down. So, so on average, combination of one bedroom, two bedrooms, you're going to be about 1,100 bucks a month. One bedrooms that are smaller units will be smaller than that.
And these are about 800 square feet apartments, you said?
On average.
On average?
Yes.
Okay, and so, we're talking about, it's, it's a somewhat dense in the way it's kind of a put-together there, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's made to look more like a more urban product. Like, most of the projects out there, you get your units pushed out to the streets in a configuration that is of higher density, but your overall density is not maxed out. It's still a three-story walk-up garden, surface park.
Okay. Why did we decide to go with 666 units? Could we do 665 or 667?
The way you laid out, believe it or not, 324 on one side, 342 on the other side. It's just, just how the math came out.
It's been uncomfortable.
If it makes you feel better, we can lop off a couple of units, okay?
Lop them off. Okay, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have a comment? This is going to be, Jana, thank you for the presentation. This is going to be ordinance number, is it 3150?
3150.
3150. Is there a motion?
We're moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District 2, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to approve ordinance number 3150 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor, I just want to, the reason I'm, I'm not going to support this stage is just because I just generally stand in opposition to these denser developments, especially if I don't necessarily think they're going to meet the need for attainable housing that we have in our community.
Understand. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Nay.
I'm a aye, so it's a motion passes 3 to 1. Our next item on the agenda is 5.5.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item 5.5 is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding a city-imposed zone change from Commercial C and Agricultural AG to Plan Development Mixed Use PD 25-3154, 25-16 on approximately 290.07 acres of land, identified as 47.292 acres of the John C. Hale Track 575, 248.403 acres in the John C. Hale Track 700, and 94.378 acres in the John C. Hale Track 565, identified in the Kaufman County CAD property ID 7653, 7666, and 7654, PD-25-3154.
This will be handled by Raylan?
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to talk to you really quick about a city-imposed zone change. What you have is a very popular, three parcels that are put together right along I-20. So it's just north of I-20 between FM 148 and all the way up to Rose Hill. Currently, it is three large parcels. Staff has met, and we have put together what we think is a good PD to overlay on the three parcels, simply because there is a high probability that you would have multiple developers involved in acreage that's laid out this way. So we wanted to go ahead and put the development standards out front of the developer. You will notice that the votes from P&amp;Z, there was a 4-2 in opposition of the zone change. I will say, talking with the commissioners, I think their biggest concern was that we were trying to zone property without a developer in mind. And I did let them know there's nothing that would ever keep a developer in the future to still come forward and try to do a zone change. But at least with a planned development overlay on this property, it at least lets your potential developers know what the city council envisions for this area. So real quick, what you currently have right now is Commercial that is right there on I-20, and then the rest of it is Majority Ag. Your future land use plan has your highway corridor all along I-20, and then also your residential. So when we put together the plan, you'll notice that it does match your future land use plan. We're keeping the Commercial right along I-20, limiting your residential to the largest area based on the thoroughfare master plan because there is a parkway that will have to go through there. And so allowing for a small number of multifamily units that would be closer to the 148 side rather than Rose Hill or the county roads on the other side. So we tried to stay with the future land use plan and just kind of figure out how this could possibly be laid out. Again, having the planned development, if portions of this property are parceled off and sold separately, the new owners would still understand where their parcel is laid out. And everything in the planned development is added under one umbrella. So if you have a number of units or a square footage of Commercial, you can't have one developer take all of that. It all has to compute. So even for the signage, we'll have to have a universal sign plan. So we went ahead and said where the approximate area of the highway signage would go to. So we tried to take into consideration how we could accommodate multiple retail spots. So that's just kind of an overview of staff's thoughts, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing, right. So let's do the public hearing. This time, the mayor will open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the city-imposed zone change from Commercial to Ag for this planned development. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? Yes.
My name is Linda Johnson, and we have property that is all...
Would you state your address, please?
7316 Rose Hill Drive. We have property that is there on County Road 304 that butts up to the back part of the property that we own, that we have for Ag and everything. And so we're afraid that they go in with the developments of homes and stuff there, that that's going to ruin what we have and go in there. They'll widen our roads and everything and make everything, you know, not like we want it, you know, as country and to do the things we've always done. They've already built a development across the street from our property with all these 3 to 4, $5,000 homes or $500,000 homes and everything. So that's causing more traffic out there on that road that is not maintained at this time. It's got potholes over it. So with all of that, it's, you know, we're just worried about what it's going to do to our property and our way of living out there.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Yes. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? All right. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Move on to 5.6.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We bring to you tonight ordinance number 3154, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, amending Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the city of Terrell and changing the zoning classification of certain property from Agriculture AG and Commercial C to Plan Development Mixed Use PD District, providing for the regulation of residential and non-residential uses on approximately 390.07 acres of land depicted on Exhibit A land map and described as 47.292 acres of the J.C. Hale Track 575, 248.403 acres of the John C. Hale Track 700, and 94.378 acres of the J.C. Hale Track 565, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 7653, 7666, and 7654, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication, and an effective date.
All right. So Raylan, this is city-initiated, right?
Yes, sir.
This is what we envision should happen with this property?
So the reason that this is coming to you this way is, I will say, in the last three or four years that even I've been here, we have gone through several development review committee meetings. You have a lot of developers that come forward. They have different ideas, but they may only be looking at 10 or 15 acres of the whole parcel. So staff wanted to propose to P&amp;Z and City Council something that would encompass all of the land to make sure that we were working under a master plan for this property. And honestly, it's because of the number of inquiries and just the different developers that kind of kicked the tires on the property. So again, not that a developer couldn't restart this process and come forward with another zone change, but at least it gives them a starting point of a PD that is approved. And, you know, if they ask for something that's not the PD, then we're not shocked if it doesn't happen. So this was just a lot of data digging over the last few years and the different things that have been proposed in this area. And we do know that once TechDOT comes through with the access roads, it's going to open up the construction there along I-20. So we wanted to prepare for it and make sure that we were accounting for the thoroughfares and the growth in the area.
This is just giving the mayor and the council input and say as to what we feel, rather than have the developer come to us and say, can we do this?
Absolutely.
We're telling them what they could do. And it's upfront. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Raylan?
When might TechDOT put in those access? Do we have any kind of idea when that might happen?
They've gone through their environmental. There's something about a lift station that's kind of in the way. So we are diligently working with TechDOT. I know that some developers are starting to reach out to TechDOT, too. So we do believe that there's going to be some movement in that direction in the next couple of years. So it's a good position.
Anyone else? All right. So council, the mayor will move to approve ordinance number 3153. I meant 3154, I'm sorry. 3154. City-initiated zoning change from Commercial C to Agricultural AG to Plan Development Mixed Use PD 25-3154-25-16 as presented, based on contingency with the comprehensive plan and the city's long-term land use and development goals. So there's the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the mayor, a second from our mayor pro temp, Phil Robinson, District 5. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and and votes with the president. Our next item on the agenda is...
Boards and commissions.
6.1, discuss the library advisory board. This is Mark Mills.
Mayor and council, this evening, we're bringing an item to you. We have a vacancy on our library board. Veronica Slaton has stepped down. She has resigned from the board. This board falls under the purview of Councilwoman Stephanie Holmes-Thomas. We have received one application, I believe, from Onima Stewart. She has applied to be a member of the board. She is a recent graduate, as of this evening, of the Terrell Citizens Academy.
I would definitely want to thank Ms. Slaton for her work on this board as we accept her resignation. So we're always excited when we have community members that want to be a part of these types of boards. I would like to postpone this. I always like to make personal contact with a new applicant and just to get that verbal okay and talk to them a little bit and all that. So if we could please postpone this, I'd be glad to. I would like to make a motion to postpone.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp from District 2, to postpone item 6.1, Advisory Board Appointment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and and votes with the president. Our next item on the agenda is 6.2, discuss and consider appointments of the naming, the facilities naming committee. Again, Mark.
Thank you. Each district has two representatives on the city's naming committee, and the mayor has one appointee. There is a vacancy in District 2. Devonna Thomas is stepping down. She is asked to not be reappointed because of other obligations. And same with Steve Hooey in District 5. So those two individuals will be vacating, and we will be coming back to you either if you have a recommendation this evening or at our meeting in December. We'll be coming back to you. We will ask you all to reappoint each of the individuals that you have appointed. They serve one-year terms that expire December 31st.
Point of order. Sorry, I'm a little tired. And this was, the mayor messed up. The, did we appoint any, no, did we make a motion to appoint anybody on the library board? No, we didn't. We just postponed. Thank you. Well, it was a discuss, not a discuss and consider. So we probably didn't even need that motion. But, okay, good. I was hopeful we didn't appoint anybody. That'll be next, that'll be next week. Great. I apologize. So now we're right. We're discussing, considering. These are the facilities naming. Go ahead, Mark. I apologize.
That's okay. Again, we're going to ask each of you to reappoint those individuals, or you may nominate someone else. Obviously, we have two vacancies, one in District 2, one in District 5. And you can make a motion and reappoint any of these individuals this evening, and we will bring it back to you at the meeting in December if there are still vacancies. And again, they expire on the 31st of December.
Wonderful. Let's start with our deputy mayor pro temp, District 2. Are you ready to announce? Someone, are you?
I'm not ready right now.
Okay. All right. How about District 5? Are you ready?
I am not ready. I'm looking for the right person to appoint to this great board, someone worthy of it. Someone with a real commitment to our history, a knowledge of Terrell. And I haven't quite yet found the right person, but I'm looking, I'm looking.
Can we get a motion to postpone item 6.2?
Motion to postpone item 6...
Point 2.
Point 2.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Phil Robinson, our mayor pro temp, District 5, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas of District 4 to postpone item 6.2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and and votes with the president. Our next item on the agenda are discussion items. The first one is Discuss Resolution 2273, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Terrell, Texas, casting its vote for a member of the Board of Directors of Kaufman Central Appraisal District and providing an effective date. Mark.
Yes, sir. The Kaufman Central Appraisal District is asking entities to cast their votes for individuals appearing on the ballot. Nicole, can you go one more slide? So the Kaufman Central Appraisal District official ballot has two individuals. There are two nominees that you can cast your votes for. I believe we have 12 votes. Danny Kirby is the first nominee. Bruce Wood is the second. And these have to be cast before December. And I don't, I've just lost the date. But I believe it's after our December meeting. So, yeah, the 16th. So if we need to this evening, you can delay. But we would have to take action the first meeting in December.
Yes. Well, it actually says it has to be adopted and returned to the office by December the 14th, so...
In our meeting's the 2nd.
Okay, so we have plenty of time.
Yes, sir.
We have time. Have we talked with Danny and Bruce? Who's going to...
We have not.
Okay. Those are the two that we need to replace.
Those are the two individuals that have been nominated for which you can cast your vote.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay.
Those are the only two individuals appearing on the ballot.
Gotcha.
And this is, this appointment, the casting of these votes is all council members. So if you wanted to split them between the two candidates or for one, that would be your option.
Sounds good. Again, so council, if you would, think about that, and then we'll see it again in December. Next item?
We'll see it again in December.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll see it at the December 2nd meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can do five for everyone, or we can split the vote, 3, 2, however we wish to do that. And what...
We do have information on both candidates.
Yes.
I do not believe that we have resumes for those individuals. We were unable to get them last year. get them last year, but we'll work on getting that information for you prior to December. Yes, ma'am.
We also need to check with Bruce, make sure he's still comfortable doing that. Our next item on the agenda is seven point two, discuss community dog park conceptual design and project development. Raylan?
So, I'm gonna do y'all a real solid tonight and tell you that I put some information on, in your packet that I would like for you to look at. We've given you a couple of different ideas for locations. Glenn and I talked a little bit about the price the last time we were here, but in typical Raylan fashion, I have a lot more things that I need to bring y'all about park expenditures. And so, I'm working on a December second presentation to y'all, which will include some of the items that y'all have talked about, such as the dog park, and then some of those capital items that we need to discuss before we go into January, looking at the upcoming summer. So, this is just some basics, some, you know, must haves for dog parks, and it's just the same budget that you've seen before. I did want to let you know that going through development agreements, Arboretum is also going to give you a dog park. I saw an exhibit for that today, too. So, anyway, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but I, I will bring you a bigger, better presentation in December.
Anybody have any questions for Raylan?
I do have a question on page three ninety-two, the downtown square. Tell me the road, I can't see the streets. I'm trying to locate that potential location.
So, that's going to be between the railroad and Broad Street. So, we bought those U P parcels and we could turn one of those in.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is discuss Waste Connections pilot program. Mr. Mills.
Thank you. I am going to go do it from the podium so I can control my slides.
All right.
So, just a little bit of background, the city of Terrell is essentially divided in half, and you have trash service on Monday and Thursday on the east side of town and Tuesday and Friday on the west, with the red line being essentially the, the line of demarcation where those two zones are split. Currently, we offer trash collection two days a week, and that's provided through Waste Connections. We are on our Tenth Amendment to the agreement. Waste Connections began servicing the city in two thousand and one. The, this amendment that was passed back in February of two thousand and twenty-three extended the agreement five years, so it had extended us to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. The current rates have the ability to be adjusted for the cost of operations as reflected in the Consumer Price Index for all urban customers for garbage and trash collection. There's also exclusivity language in the agreement that allows for Waste Connections to provide all service, both residential and commercial. Individual haulers that are not Waste Connections are not, not authorized haulers and have, the city has the ability to go after those companies and Waste Connections has the legal authority to file an injunction and go after them as well. And often, so it's a bit of a revenue issue for the city. When there's an unauthorized hauler, they don't pay the franchise fee that the same, that Waste Connection pays to us. Our rate changes last went into effect in October of two thousand and twenty-three as it pertains to garbage. So, again, our current service and then some future options. Right now, garbage cans have to be thirty-five gallons or less. This is because they are manually loaded, manually unloaded at the curb by the collection crews. You're limited to fifteen bags, cans, or bundles each pickup day. The total weight cannot exceed thirty-five pounds for bags or fifty pounds for containers. And once, it includes once a week brush with five cubic yard limit and two bulk items once a week. We ran a pilot program and we have a couple of options for you all to consider. You can continue with our current service or you can look at moving to a once a week service provided with a ninety-six or sixty-five gallon cart where they would come through and collect that once a week. It would be a Monday through Friday collection with the city being split into five service areas. Trash would include, the trash service would include only the contents of the cart plus brush and bulk pickup as it exists today. Again, it'd be once a week bulk and brush, five cubic yards of brush, two bulk items. And then additional carts would be available for a monthly fee. Another option would be the same, except it would be twice a week collection, again, using the, the poly carts, either ninety-six gallon or sixty-five gallon. The smaller one would be available for individuals that would have trouble moving this ninety-six gallon cart. Again, trash service would include only the contents of the cart plus the bulk, bulk and the brush. It would be once a, it would be once a week brush, five cubic yards and two items, and then additional carts available for a monthly fee. We talk about the carts. I think most people are familiar with them. Again, we're talking about a ninety-five or ninety-six gallon cart and a sixty-five gallon cart as an option. So, the way that these will be collected would be one of two methods depending upon the area of town and the accessibility of the neighborhood. So, in some areas, we would have to run, we, Waste Connections would have to run the railroad truck. It would be a driver and one crew member. The truck would have a tipper on the back of it, and the tipper would dump the contents of the container into the back of the truck. The other option is the automated side load truck where there's room to operate them. Again, it would pull up next to the trash can, pick it up, dump it. In this, you're going to get the can put back essentially where it was picked up from, again, not, not thrown into the ditch or into the yard. Be something we'd continue have to, to police with the, with the railroad service, but the, the automated side load where it could be implemented would put the container back in the same place essentially where it was picked up. So, we ran a pilot program over the summer in the Stallings addition. On August the fourth, we had a meeting with the residents of the Stallings addition, addition to talk about the program and get options for other things to consider. There were many requests for additional carts. They were in favor of an adjusted collection frequency from once a week to twice a week, and then we continually identified communication and provided them communication reminders about the proper use of the cart and where to place it and what their collection schedules were to try to ensure that we had some success with this program. So, the key findings, we pretty quickly reached ninety-five percent compliance by the official start date. We started rolling the containers out a little bit before the program, but the official kickoff date, we were at about ninety-five percent compliant on that date. There were a few, few houses that still did not have carts at that point, but we got through that and were able to get them carts. The issues observed that once a week per collection may not be sufficient for some of the larger households. They had overflow bags and extra containers. The overflow bags were risks for animals getting into the trash, providing litter in the neighborhood. Several residents requested additional carts and they were informed that the extra carts would be available after the pilot program if the city went to the poly cart program, and they requested twice a week pickup. So, these are just a pic, a couple of pictures that talked about, to show the, the overflowing carts that we saw, the extra carts. The green cart was the one provided by Waste Connections. The two darker ones were the ones that the residents were using. If we were to move to once or twice a week collection, it would only be the Waste Connection carts that were collected. But again, additional carts would be available. And just to provide some, some curb appeal pictures, the three pictures on the left-hand side are with no poly cart, and then with, on the right-hand side is where the poly carts were used, where you see the trash in and in the container and not spread across the, the neighborhood. So, what are we going to be asking you? So, service rates, our current rate right now, twice a week with no cart requirement is fifteen dollars and twenty, twenty-two cents. If we move to the proposal for the ninety-six gallon poly cart once a week collection, it would be sixteen dollars and eighteen cents, be a ninety-six cent increase to our current rate and would be about a six point three percent increase. If we move to the proposed carts twice a week, it would be twenty-three dollars and seventy cents would be our cost. It'd be eight dollars and forty-eight cents, roughly fifty-five percent increase, almost fifty-six percent increase in the cost of service over the current rate today. If you were to request an additional poly cart and we did the once a week per service, it essentially works out to the same rate as what would be the twice a week collection, except it would only apply to those individuals that requested the second cart. In terms of the service agreement, currently, we have the, our updated contract includes the five-year extension. What was, sorry, would include an additional five-year extension from, from two thousand and twenty-eight to two thousand and thirty-three because of the investment in the carts and the trucks. They'd have to put tippers on the rear load. They have to secure the, the automated side load vehicles. The most recent Bureau of Labor Statistic Garbage and Trash CPI index adjustment would be applied to commercial and roll-off pricing for the franchise customers. That would not impact the residential, the residential would be the rates that we showed. That'd be roughly a six point five percent increase in the commercial rates, and it would maintain the exclusivity of the service contract for commercial customers. So, another option you have, our current agreement expires in two thousand and twenty-eight. We can explore options to end that, bring that contract to an early end, and we can actually go out and put out a bid if you all would like because we've been with, with Waste Connections for a number of years. You run the risk of rates being even higher because I, I can't tell you what the other companies are going to set their rates at, and I would expect that Waste Connections, we, we have the pricing that we have because of the relationship we have. But if you, there are improvements you want to see in service or improvements you want to see in customer service, if you want to explore, including recycling, those types of things, you would do that through going out with an R F P. There is a company out there that, their former waste industry individuals, well, they will help write and evaluate the R F P and they do it at no cost to the city. They collect their fee off of the responders, that whoever's awarded the R F P covers that cost. So, at this point, we can leave things alone. We can move to poly cart once a week, poly cart twice a week. We can go out for R F P and, and it's a matter of how you all would like to proceed. We're not asking you to take a vote this evening, but are looking for direction on when we come back in December, how you would like us to bring this back.
Could we get some more information on municipalities around Terrell, what their rates are, just what the customers paying? We can figure out what their contract is by what their customers are paying and whether or not they're once a week or twice a week so we can have something to compare with.
We will bring that, we will send that out to you prior to the December meeting.
All right. And then also, council, I would tell you that, you know, we've talked about this multiple times throughout my tenure as mayor, and we are getting at a point to where I think this requires a little bit more discussion because we're, we're growing. And, you know, one of the things that we want to talk about is our community and how it looks and the curb appeal. And, and I agree with you. Now, some, some of you had brought up in the past that you wanted uniformity without, within the community about the trash service, but I'll open it up as if, if anybody has any questions for Mark.
Mark, you know, I think the genesis of this was sort of the discussion that you and I and the mayor and Glenn had about our trash situation. We, we have some significant, significant trash service issues in Terrell. The complaints that I hear commonly are, you know, thrown trash cans, broken cans, trash bags that animals are ripping into because we have trash bags sitting out and then they're just kind of, they're not contained at all. So, the thought is, how can we get around some of that, right? The throwing of the cans and the broken cans. Well, the thought with the poly carts is we have Waste Connections provide the trash cans. If one gets broken, they replace it, right? And then also, it kind of, when you have the poly carts, the machine arm comes down, picks up the cart, dumps it. It eliminates the, the human aspect of the guy who's frustrated that they throw in his, the cart and break in it, whatever else, throwing trash everywhere. Also, with the big ninety-six gallon carts, the thought is you can put, instead of having the trash bag sitting out and the assore of that and the animals ripping into it, you have the trash bags inside the trash can. It's contained. It looks better. But I do have some concerns that in the pilot program, we found that, that many were saying that once per week collection is not sufficient, even with the ninety-six gallon cart. That, that was the case?
That, for the larger households, that's, that's the feedback that we've gotten. And again, when you're used to being able to put fifteen bags at the curb, ninety-six gallon trash can is, it's, it's a shift.
And, you know, I would say let's do the, the, the twice a week with the poly carts, but that price increase is pretty dramatic, jumping from sixteen to twenty-three. To me, it, you know, what makes the most sense would be the kind of middle ground there of doing the, you know, the poly carts twice or once per week, but with the option, if you're the type who wants to have an additional, you know, cart, you can pay the additional seven fifty, have that flexibility. To me, that seems to make the most sense, you know, give everyone the option to include a second cart. It's still once a week pickup, though, right? It's just two carts.
Correct.
Okay. And then they would have them, you know, I just don't want to have a situation where trash is sitting around for a week smelling bad, it's not being picked up, but most cities just have once a week pickup, correct? We're, we're kind of unusual with the two, two times a week pickup, aren't we?
I, I believe that is the case. Most, most of the entities that, that I'm familiar with, there are some that still do twice a week, but I, you see a lot of once a week poly cart.
Just, you guys are asking for direction. To me, I, I would prefer a solution where we have a poly cart that is owned by our provider, that they provide it. If it gets broken, they bring a new one. You eliminate the human element of breaking the cans and throwing them, and you have a neater, tidier situation. My direction would be, let's go with the poly carts once per week with the option of an additional cart at the seven fifty. That's where I am with it.
Let me add one thing to your comments. We also discussed about those heavy trucks only being on our roadways once a week versus twice a week, which would help us with our pavement repairs and future cost of any repairs. So, that was a positive for doing that, yeah, on the roads. Anyone here?
I'm looking at the feedback from this pilot program. They needed additional carts. Once a week wasn't enough. So, even though it helps our roads and our streets, I'm just looking at the feedback from that pilot program. So, I mean, so what, I don't know. Yeah, fifty-five percent is an increase, and when you get the extra cart, you're almost there still. You add the seven fifty to the once a week cart.
It's within two cents.
Twenty-three, yeah, it's about fifty-five percent still, and you keep the trash for a week. I just, man.
We can bring back multiple options.
I do like the idea about the company that does the, you know, R F Q and then they get the money from somebody else and not us. I do like that idea.
We just weren't sure if you all would have an interest in going out for an R F P. You run the risk of rates going up, but you also, you also, there's a potential opportunity of someone that wants in, that wants the business, that will come in lower and try to buy the business.
And I know some of that is probably the exclusive contract we have with the other, the roll-offs and things like that.
And that's something else you can do with, with an R F P is you can basically put it in as an alternate that, okay, what is our residential rates if we're in open market? What are, what do our residential rates become if there's an exclusivity clause where you're the only one that provides commercial? Because I know that that's been, that's been a topic of conversation as well.
And we just talked about this a couple of years ago. We're doing it now because we're about halfway in the middle of the contract?
Our contract, we just renewed it in two thousand and twenty-three. It expires in two thousand and twenty-eight, but I believe there's, there's an out that we can explore if you all wanted to go that direction.
It would be cheaper if we held their feet to the fire for them to just do what we paid them to do, which is pick up the trash and treat our trash bins with respect. Can we just do that?
We try. I don't have, I don't have a crew that follows them around all day. So, a lot of it is, a lot of it is self-reporting by residents, but if they, if their container's broken or if their container is not being treated in the way that they like, if they can get ahold of Glenn at Public Services or Waste Connections directly, there have been individuals fired over it.
They do have a rotating crew, that much I'm aware of. This is the thing. We started this because we have a problem with that provider, and we, you know, five years, anyway. I'm the kind of, I just don't want to give you more money to do something that you should be doing. That's all. And every time I drive through my district or the city of Terrell, I'll just take a picture of a broken trash can or the brush that's been sitting there for two months and do what I do. And maybe we should have a slide of, for every trash can you break, every car mirror you ding, we're going to take it out of our chat to you. We, let's not give anybody any more money. I just have, you know, I'm just not doing well right now.
And we are exploring options to try to address some of the longstanding barrage.
Penalties. Let, let, thank you for doing the program. I mean, really, I really appreciate you doing the research. Stallings addition has small streets and it would work there, but rumor has it that when I open up my water bill, I'm not going to be happy. And so, oh, you got a pretty big ninety-six gallon trash can and we're going to charge you sixteen dollars. I don't want my car to get egged.
And, Mark, a couple of additional things. I do agree, and we discussed this when this was, it was one of my first few council meetings when we approved this trash situation. We discussed that we really wanted to see either some penalties or incentives in whatever new contract is, is put in place, some service incentives and penalties. The other piece is, I'm a little disappointed in looking at where it says cart service of proposed agreement, and we've got, it says the updated contract to five-year extension. Would, they'd want to, they want to submit the contract to a five-year extension for the investment in the carts and trucks. We all know that we're saving them money by going this route. We're taking an additional person off the truck. Man, I think additional two people, so it's just the driver on the arm. So, we're saving them on labor. For them to come back and say, well, we'll do it if you'll extend the contract, you know, I think we can push back on that and say, you know what? No, we're saving you money. We're doing you a favor if we get this.
And fuel, having to come to the city once a week versus twice a week. That's a big expense.
Yeah, exactly.
It's why we wanted to present you all with some options, just to get, get an idea of how you would like us to come back with this. of how you would like us to come back with this.
I think there's some negotiation there. I think initially, when we first wanted to do the pilot program, we had hoped that we might be able to keep the rates the same and make the change, and they benefit from the savings. Let's get back to that negotiation and figure out where we are.
Happy to do that.
So let me ask you this, this time, if we stay where we are, you're telling me it won't be a change in the price?
If we stay where we are today, the, we're not negotiating that. It stays at the 15, no, 2, 15, 20, I can't remember the number off the top of my head.
Okay.
The 1522.
Thank you.
Now, they have, they have the right to come back and ask for an increase based on CPI, and you have the right to accept it or deny.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next item is business items, discuss and consider resolution number 2277, resolution of the City Council of the City of Terrell, Texas, authorizing Terrell Police Department to apply for a grant and receive funds from the Office of the Governor, bullet resistant components for law enforcement vehicle funding and establishing an effective date. Rayland, or Chief?
So as you stated, the governor's office has issued about $5 million in funding. We're going to try and apply for some of that. As it stands currently, none of our fleet, aside from the tactical protection vehicle that we got from the federal government, have any type of bullet resistant protection. There's no limit on how much we can ask for, there's no minimum on how much we ask for. So once we have the resolution that's required, we're going to sit down and staff and try and figure out how many vehicles we want to try and equip because we want to ensure that we at least get some of that money coming our way. So that's the, that's the request, is that we just need the resolution to be able to go forward and start asking for the money.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Is there, well, first of all, I would say that we would want to support in any way possible the safety of our police officers and give you all the tools you need to be effective as a department.
Sure.
And that's not just the cars, that's across the board, right?
Yes, sir.
Anything that the police would need, we need to know about it and try to figure out a way to make that happen. I like the fact that it's grant. Again, maybe it's a matching grant, maybe it's 100%, I don't know.
There's no match on this one, so.
Oh, it really is? Okay, so, yeah, get all you can.
Eloquently requesting, we, we won't have to match it.
Anybody have any question for the Chief?
Chief, I just want to say, in honor and with regard to what occurred with Officer Caninoza, anything that our officers need to keep them safe is 100%. You have our, we have your back there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Maybe we should find a grant for cars.
Yes. This is resolution number 2277. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District 2, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to approve resolution 2277 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried down to both of those persons. Our next item on the agenda is discuss and consider resolution 2276.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't choke. Discuss and consider resolution number 2276, resolution authorizing the filing of an application for financial assistance from the State Infrastructure Bank, SIB loan, authorizing the interim city manager to act on behalf of the city of Terrell in all matters relating to the application and to negotiate and execute a contract for professional services related to the design and management of the SIB loan application for the Sage Hill Parkway roadway construction project and providing an effective date.
Rayland?
Good evening again. Back in 2023, and I put a copy of this in your packet, the city of Terrell signed a memorandum of understanding with NET RMA. This was for the Sage Hill Road project, and actually it was for Sage Hill before Sage Hill was put on the federal list. So the reason that you had the MOU with NET RMA was they were going to be the applicant for the state infrastructure bank loan. So now that we have gone through the process and this roadway has been added to the federal list, we did learn a couple of months ago that NET RMA withdrew that application for a SIB loan. We were kind of waiting for progress there along crossroads. If you'll remember, a lot of this is tied into the potential event center space, and right now we have the MOBIs confirmed, and you've also recently approved the construction plat for the new Holiday Inn Express. So the request tonight is just the SIB loan application resolution, and this would be the application design is already complete on Sage Hill, so we would be ready to go into the loan application if approved. Funding for the design work can be funded through the impact fee zone for this area, and any loan details and also loan repayment would be structured such that it was paid for out of TERS 1, 2, 3, and also the power center, which will all benefit.
Okay. So this is, isn't paid for out of the general fund, it's paid for out of the TERSs that exist out there. And what I would tell you is that, Council, if you're moving forward with text dot, the first thing they're going to ask is have you had any engineering done, if you've had all of the paperwork's filed before they even move on it. So this is just getting ahead of it, this is how we've always done it, and it's been helpful dealing with text dot, and, and so I, I think we continue. Does anybody have any question for Janet? Or Rayland, I'm sorry.
Anybody. We'll all answer, we're good.
Rayland. All right. Thank you, Rayland. Is there a motion on resolution 2276?
Motion to approve resolution 2276?
Yes. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Phil Robertson, our Mayor, Pro Tem District 5, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District 2, to approve resolution number 2276 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried down to both of those persons. Our next item on the agenda is 8.3.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight, resolution number 2278, supporting an application to the Railroad Commission of the Texas Brownfields Response Program for Environmental Assessment and Related Services for property located at and adjacent to the site commonly known as the Nike base, authorizing the interim city manager to coordinate with property owners and the Railroad Commission of Texas regarding the application and providing an effective date.
Okay. Rayland?
So I'm very excited to bring to y'all the next two items as we kind of close out what has been Terranova discussion for quite some time. This is a little bit of the piece that Councilman Robinson was talking about and that we were listening. There wasn't a whole lot we could say, but we've been researching. So originally, the title of this resolution had everything to do with Texas Brownfields. The resolution number is still the same, but what, the way that it appears in your packet is just that TCEQ administers several voluntary environmental assessment and remediation programs, and what staff is asking for permission to do is assist with the applications for those private owners, because they would need a city sponsorship for some of these programs. And so this would be just an assistance to the property owners adjacent to the Nike missile site, so that we can help them down the path of some of the TCEQ testing and possible remediation.
Okay. Again, Council, I'm supportive of moving forward with doing all that we can as a municipality to help those that are affected by anything that might be on the Nike missile site. The best way to do that is for TCEQ to come in and evaluate and then move forward from there. But this is the first process. Does anybody have any questions for Rayland?
Development doesn't go into that area, it stops before that, right?
Yes, so Terranova doesn't actually own the Nike base, but because of the, the conversation that's been had, the owner of Terranova will have to have testing done on his property, and then this is something that would help other property owners. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Anyone else?
Do we, so what is the city's role going to be if, say, the testing comes back, we've got contaminants? How are we going to, what will the city's role be in ensuring that this, that it gets remediated?
It would be an agreement between TCEQ and that property owner. So the only sponsorship that the city does is just recognize that we are the governmental agency that is recommending these properties for these programs. Once it is turned over to TCEQ, the results of those testing and any remediation, there's different, if there's remediation that's needed, there's different program paths that TCEQ has for remediation, but there is no funding clause, there is no follow-up as far as the city side, but they do have to have the city sponsorship to apply.
But I know from other projects, TCEQ standards are pretty stringent, and if there's, if anything tends to, you know, not be in line with their standards, they'd be pretty proactive in terms of ensuring that this developer.
They would be the ones you would want in charge, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We would have to turn it over to them if we found something.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Rayland.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Rayland. This is resolution 2278. Is there a motion on 2278?
Motion to approve resolution number 2278?
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Phil Robertson, our Mayor, Pro Tem District 5, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to approve resolution 2278 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried down to both of those persons. Our next item on the agenda, 8.4, discuss and consider resolution number 2274, authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate and the mayor to execute a development agreement with NM10 Terrell LLC of the Terranova Project. Rayland?
So what you have in your packet is the resolution, we've had different forms of this, we, we all know that we've been under negotiations, there is a draft development agreement in your packet for review. I do love that some of your citizens were able to speak to some of the highlights. In your packet, I made sure that we listed some of those major terms that have been addressed going back and forth after some of the things that we've learned in the public hearing. Just like we spoke about, the environmental testing and remediation, the developer shall conduct environmental testing if necessary and also give to us the remediation plan, and that all has to be done prior to the Phase 1 construction plat. TCSS roadway standards and variances, we'll be working with the city engineer during the review process, looking at different geotechnical reports for this area, but any roadways where there is an allowable variance from our TCSS, we were able to negotiate additional years on the performance bond, which is great, so that will help with our maintenance in that area. Setback in tree preservation, we were able to discuss an additional 10-foot buffer, which is actually within the residential lots for the properties that are around the Glenhaven subdivisions. So we were able to build that in as an additional buffer. Five-year agreement review, which is one of my favorites, every five years, both parties will read the development agreement and make sure that it still is meeting the needs of both the city and the developer. Traffic impact analysis at each and every, with Terrell ISD, which they have, and those site locations are being worked out with the school district, and then also six acres of public safety land dedication.
Okay.
Just to name a few.
This puts teeth into the development that we're doing. Any questions for Rayland?
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify this, so the developer has to do some testing on their property?
On their property.
Even though it doesn't, it's not a part of the Nike?
So they have property that, that abuts the Nike base, and so we're requiring Phase 1 at all of the property that abuts the Nike base, to prove to us that there's been no runoff.
Okay, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
I like the five-year review as well.
Mm-hmm.
The developer, if they don't follow this through and somebody else buys it, they can't, can they use any parts of this agreement? The new developer, if they sell off, can they use this agreement to continue on with the project? You understand what I mean?
Only the zoning is transferable. For them to transfer over the development agreement, it would require approval of the city. So it doesn't automatically happen.
Right.
But the city could allow the transfer, but the zoning stays.
Got you.
Yeah.
But, but, but they would need to come back to the, that mayor and council?
Oh, for sure.
Or the development agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So they could even make it tougher if they wanted to at that point? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say once again, it's been said, but I just want to thank staff for all of the hard work he put into this, listening to the community, doing, making the best possible deal that we could with this agreement to address the environmental concerns, the thoroughfare concerns. You know, we're not going to make everyone happy or we're going to get everything we want, but again, it's an agreement and it's a, you, you guys did a great job coming to this agreement, so thank you for your work on this.
Kudos, again, yeah, I can't say it enough, because when I look at just saying no, walking away from it, we don't know what we get, and then we don't get anything from it, and we're in this mess, so I want to tell you again how appreciative I am as.
Very much so.
All right, anyone else? This is resolution 2274, I believe? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a motion on 2274?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2274.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, our District 4 representative, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District 2, to approve resolution 2274 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried down to both of those persons. Our next item on the agenda is 8.5, discuss and consider final concept plan and receive design and construction timeline update for Kings Creek Park. Brianna?
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I am here to present to you guys our final concept plan for Kings Creek Park. We listened to residential concerns and the request to have a sidewalk put in within the neighborhood. So going back to the drawing board with our consultants, we were able to kind of discuss what we can do to accommodate our residents' concerns. So we are proposing to take that portion of the trail closest to Kings Creek and kind of realigning it so it's more parallel along with the street to kind of, you know, give and take with all concerns and requests. Discussing with our consultants, this is not a big change to the current cost estimate for this project, so we should still be within our current estimate. I have also attached in your packet the, the schedule that we are looking at having for this project. As of right now, looking at that schedule, we are looking to bid in May and construction starts in July of next year. And, do, 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 I think that's pretty much all I have for you guys, and I just wanted to bring this to you and get a final okay before we move into the schematic drawings and start the bidding process.
All right. This is going to be interesting, because who has questions?
I know there was some discussion about the restroom.
That's what I was waiting on. I knew.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah, did you eliminate that on purpose?
So where are we?
We had some impassioned comments last week about that.
The councilwoman wants to know where the restroom is, is it included or no?
Right, right now, the restroom is included in the design. Talking to our consultants, I did bring up the idea of looking at different options for this bathroom, right? So one of our current design models we were looking at was a modular building, but we're also running different analysis when it comes to hiring a contractor to do it from the ground up, so on those utilities, the walls, all of that good stuff. So we're still kind of doing some cost estimates on both of them, but that is something I wanted to at least address so that our residents feel like we're taking the time to look at the cost of this restroom, so.
Okay.
So at the TML, I don't know if you had the opportunity to walk by a certain booth, but the booth that has the modular restrooms that we've already partake, I had the opportunity to visit with him, and so challenged him with quite a few questions, and as she stated, we're going to look internally and look at some other alternatives. And I, I was very candid with him, I didn't pull any punches, I told him that I was going to do that, that we struggled with that because we can build a nice house.
With air conditioning and?
Yes, ma'am.
Free bathrooms and?
You know, so we're going to look at that and scrub that a little bit more and try to come up with some alternatives, use our core construction company that we have with the fire station number three and the pet adoption facility, so we're going to try to use some of those resources in-house.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, because I think that's been a point of contention for a long time, the- the cost of these bathrooms. I'm always appalled by it, so if we could get that down, that'd be awesome, so thank you for your work.
Have you ever used one? I'm never, I'm not ever used one.
I have, actually.
Oh, you have? Okay.
I mean, they're fine. They're fine.
Okay.
I'm not blown away by them when I go in there.
All right.
They're not luxury mansion bathrooms.
Gold faucets. So this is a discussing, because does anybody have any other comments for Brianna?
Thank you for the work.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. There are just no words. Thank you for doing this.
So is, are we, this amount, or we're just, the plan itself, there's no money involved yet?
Not yet.
Just the concept plan? So there's not an exceed number? Okay. So this is just to consider the final concept plan. We're going to either approve it or not? Yes? Okay. Is there a motion on 8.5?
So moved.
We have a motion on 8.5. Is there, is there a second?
So seconded.
All right. We got a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem District 2, a second from Phil Robertson, our Mayor Pro Tem District 5, to approve the final concept plan and receive the design and construction timeline update for Kings Creek Park. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried out of vote of the President. Our next item on the agenda, Discuss and Consider Financial Policy. Mr. Mills?
Well, I have a, about a 45-slide presentation for you this evening.
No, 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 no.
We are.
Four slides.
We are bringing, no slides.
Okay.
We are bringing you the financial policies for fiscal year 2026 to be adopted this evening. We bring these to you annually. At this time, we're making no recommend, we have no recommended changes. We're waiting for a new finance director to be brought on board. We expect him to start before the end of the month, and we'll bring, be bringing back either a completely new policy or a new policy in pieces to you over the course of the next several months. And Omira is very excited because we're going to involve her in the process. So I, there are no recommended changes at this point for the FY26 financial policy. We're just asking you to approve it so we can carry them forward.
Thank you, Mark. I'm excited to have some new eyes on our financial policy and then have them input as to whether or not we need to make any changes. That's going to be a good thing. Does anybody have any questions for Mark? If not, we would accept the financial policy as presented?
I'd like to motion that we accept the financial policy as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Phil Robertson, our Mayor Pro Tem for District 5, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to accept our financial policy as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried out of vote of the President. Our next item on the agenda is 8.7, Discuss and Consider Employee Handbook.
Same song, second verse. We're bringing you an exact copy of what we used for FY25 for FY26. We are implementing a new HR system and payroll system that we will be live on in January. We have a new risk coordinator with the city that we would like to have involved in this, and Omira, again, she, she told me she likes writing policies, so she's going to pay for that. But we'll be bringing, again, either be bringing you a, an entirely new policy or bring it back to you in pieces after the first of the year.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mark on the employee handbook? If not, are we accepting or approving, or what are we doing on this? Accepting the employee handbook as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the employee handbook as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I don't.
We have a motion from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, our District 4 representative, a second from Phil Robertson, Mayor Pro Tem District 5, to approve or accept the employee handbook as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried out of vote of the President. Our next item on the agenda are information reports. They are from the Terrell Police Department Monthly Report, they are the Fire Department Monthly Report, and the Housing Department Monthly Report. Council, I'd ask that you reach out to our Assistant City Manager, Mark Mills, and/or the department heads on that information and get any questions that you may have answered. At this time, we're going to adjourn into executive session in accordance with Section 551 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the following. Section 551.071, consultations with attorneys. Section 551.074, personnel matters. Section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session.